Good evening, welcome to Peoria City Council. Regular meeting for Tuesday, September 17th. Would you please rise, observe a moment of silence, and the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Patena.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Barrett.
Here.
Vice Mayor Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Ames.
Here.
Councilmember Patena.
Here.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Councilmember Carlott.
Here.
Councilmember Leonie.
Here. Thank you. This is the final call to Smith Speaker request forms. They can be found in the lobby. Fill them out, give them to the clerk, and we will call upon you at the appropriate time. First item up are presentations or certificates of appointment to board and commission members. If the chairman would join me up front.
The city of Peoria has 21, or I think going on 22 here, boards and commissions. And these are volunteers who help the city make lots of decisions and recommendations. And, you know, we value your time so much, your wisdom, your experience, and really, really appreciate you helping to make our city go around. And so we're gonna welcome, gosh, a very large stack of new people to our boards and commissions this evening, and we're gonna start with Eva Osuna to the Arts Commission. Congratulations. Thanks. All right, next is Michael Meek for the Board of Adjustments. Scott Henneke, Building Board of Appeals. Brian Greathouse, Industrial Development Authority. Anna Lee Boyle, Youth Advisory Board. A lot of people are joining our Youth Advisory Board tonight. This is our future right here. Thanks to all of you, we really appreciate your service.
Next item is the Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda are all items that are listed with a C. They're considered to be routine. They've been previously reviewed by the council. It will be enacted by one motion unless a council member asks for one to be withdrawn. Do we have any requests for removal? Seeing none, could I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Ames, seconded by Mr. Leonie. Please vote. The clerk will record the vote. It is unanimous, thank you very much. Next item, we're going to the regular agenda. New business, first item is 12R, Resolution Establishing Policies Governing Wages and Working Conditions for American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. So that everyone understands the process tonight, we are going to have a presentation by staff. Council can ask questions. Then we will open it up to comments from the public, and then we will have a motion, then we will deal with the motions as they go along. Staff.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. Our Human Resources Director Julie Ayers will lead the discussion, supported by Deputy City Manager Jeff Tyne.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to start with some background. The city of Peoria has a longstanding collaborative history with AFSMI and its other bargaining units. The city also takes great pride in its employees, and as such is committed to providing competitive market wages. We have four labor units here at the city of Peoria, and all four MOUs expired June 30th of 2013. So in preparation for negotiations with all four of our bargaining units, we held joint labor and management negotiation training regarding interest-based bargaining. We also conducted market wage studies in the fall of 2012, and we worked with our labor groups to collaborate on the positions, in AFSMI's case, with the benchmark positions to be evaluated. We also conducted a session with AFSMI on the city's financial picture and budget preparations for fiscal year 14. When it comes to negotiations, city management staff represents the city council at the negotiating table, and we obtain instruction from the city council through executive sessions as authorized by state statute. In fact, in calendar year 2013, we've to date had 13 such executive sessions to obtain that direction and instruction. The city council identified the city's interests and established the parameters for staff as part of these sessions. As for the backdrop to council interests, I'd like to have Deputy City Manager Jeff Tyne go into a little bit more detail on that.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to provide some context for the proposed wage increases that are before you. And this includes a financial context, as the city, over the last several years, has had to continue to manage through the difficult economic times. Interestingly enough, the general fund revenue is still below the level that we were at five years ago. And so in response to this revenue drop, of course, the city had to reduce its budget over 15% for just its operating budget since that time. Yet in doing so, the city councils at those times saw fit to avoid placing that burden on our workforce. So unlike what you might have seen in other communities, there were no reductions to our employee compensation. There were no furloughs, there was no lost wage days, no employee layoffs, and no reductions in employee benefits. And we were able to maintain similar employee contributions to our health care benefits. So in fact, when the revenue picture did stabilize last year, you may recall, the city council saw fit to provide increases in employee raises to the workforce, and then accelerated these raises to the first day of the fiscal year. Currently, the city is in sound financial position. We have very good, strong reserves that are consistent with our policies that are in place, and the ability to work within our means. Going forward, our financial forecasts show that we anticipate, as our forecasts show, revenue growth annually at about 3.2%. That revenue growth is expected to help support many of the core services that we've talked about over the last several years, and also to address city council priorities that were identified just a couple of months ago during the fiscal year 2014 budget process. Among those priorities, of course, is an interest in providing compensation levels that support and preserve our workforce. In establishing those compensation levels, the city addresses this from much of what we call an equity, an equity perspective, excuse me. We look at what's called internal equity, and that's when we try to make sure that adjustments that we look at are looked at relative to positions of the entire city organization, not just to one employee group. And then we look from an external side at equity, at a number of benchmark cities here in the Valley of the Sun and in other organizations, to make sure that our pay is competitive in the workplace. And for the case of AFSMI-covered positions, this is the case, as the benchmark study that Ms. Ayers referred to showed, actual salary levels for Peoria employees covered under AFSMI are over 6% over the benchmark comparison. So just to give you a little context to the development of these discussions.
Now to talk a bit more about the process of negotiations between AFSMI and the city of Peoria, I did want to acknowledge the individuals who spent a number of sessions at the table negotiating this year. And on the AFSMI, you'll see a number of individuals across the city organization, and then we also had Roman Ullman from the AFSMI organization who participated on the AFSMI side of the table. For the city side of the negotiations table, we had Jay Davies as our lead negotiator, joined by two other city employees, Linda Bizi Batma and Chris Calcaterra. And as we got towards what turned out to be the end of negotiations, Linda had to ask to be removed from the negotiation table, and she was replaced near the end with our deputy city manager Jeff Tyne. Just some background on the negotiations process itself. Negotiations opened with AFSMI on February 25th, 2013. And as negotiations proceeded, AFSMI did inquire what would happen if a deal was not struck prior to June 30th, the expiration of their current contract. They were notified at that time, and this was in early May, that if no deal was not struck prior to June 30th, the expiration of the contract, a new MOU would not be retroactive, and the current contract would not be extended. The current MOU did in fact expire on June 30th, and the city manager implemented work rules, which in essence mimicked the rules that had been in place under the MOU to be effective July 1st. After 18 negotiation sessions, the city offered, and AFSMI accepted, the addition of a skilled city facilitator to try to forge a deal, but AFSMI did declare impasse on August 11th after the 20th negotiating session during this process. The city, under its code, offered mediation, and AFSMI did decline to participate in mediation. The impasse procedures, as contained in City Code 1924E, states that if either party refuses to participate or withdraws from the mediation process, the matter shall be addressed in accordance with paragraph F. Paragraph F states that the city council shall take such action as it deems in the public interest, including the interest of the employees involved. And so tonight, city council is considering taking such action as all required and anticipated aspects of negotiations under our code have been met. The resolution that was attached to the council agenda for this evening establishes a 3.5% pay increase in fiscal year 14 and 15 for all eligible AFSMI employees on their anniversary date, with the caveat that if the anniversary date has already passed in fiscal year 14, it would be effective upon council action tonight. For covered members at the top of their pay range, there would be a one-time payment of $850 in each year of fiscal year 14 and 15. And finally, it would adopt the work rules as implemented by the city manager to be effective through June 30th, 2015. This proposal is being brought forward in relationship to council's previously stated interests, but also we conducted an equity review to ensure that it was fair, what was being brought forward. We had the Sargents MOU adopted by council back in April, and that was a four-year contract that for the eligible members who are receiving increases during that four-year time, they would average 3.5% merit increases each year. We also have all of the eligible nonrepresented employees in the city receiving a 3.5% increase in fiscal year 14 on their anniversary date. Something you might also find interesting is that the forecasts from national compensation surveys do report that US workers across the board and across all sectors can expect 3% increases in 2013, and in fact, education and government workers are lower than that at 2.1%. The 3.5% being proposed is slightly higher than our benchmark organizations that we compare our competitive wage structure to as well. As part of the communications with AFSMI, and as you've seen probably over the past few weeks, the last offer from AFSMI was $1.50 per hour for all employees. And it is an important distinction that it would be for all employees as proposed as compared to those who are just eligible within the pay plan. To do a comparison side-by-side of the costing projection between the resolution that's being proposed tonight and the AFSMI proposal of $1.50 per hour for all members, is that the city's proposal over two years, and again, just to recap, is a 3.5% merit increase for eligible employees and an $850 topped-out payment for those at the top of their range, has a two-year total ongoing cost of $904,648, and a one-time cost of $181,306. The AFSMI proposal, as listed here, $1.50 merit increase for all members, including topped-out members, has a total ongoing cost over two years of more than $2.5 million. A couple of other facts regarding AFSMI wages. The actual salaries for full-time benefited AFSMI employees range from a low of, and these are actual incumbents in positions, they range from a low of $27,667,000, sorry, to a high of $79,851 annually. The current average AFSMI salary is $45,880 annually. And you also may find interesting that the US Department of Commerce Bureau of the Centus lists the current poverty threshold for a family of four for 2012 to be $23,497. When we talk about the compensation philosophy of the city, there's a couple of things I'd like to review quickly. The first is pay ranges. And our compensation program has an identified pay range for each job within the city. And this is done to create a minimum pay and a maximum pay for each position, basically establishing the value of the job to the city and its citizens. The value is determined based on an internal equity review and also a market or an external review. It's based on such factors as experience, knowledge, skills, and education required to perform the functions of the job. And again, we also look at an external review of the market to make sure that we're paying competitive wages. So once the pay range is established, the way that employees, let me back up, pay increases can work in one of two ways. One is a market adjustment or a COLA, which moves the entire pay range and all of the incumbents within the pay range. A step program or merit program is how employees move from the minimum of the pay to the maximum of the pay, and that's given through a step or a merit program. The city has traditionally used percentages to move employees through the pay program, and that's because it allows employees to move at the same pace as they're moving through the pay plan. One of the considerations here tonight, and I know that AFSMI has requested at the table and also since then, is a flat dollar amount increase, which allows employees to move at an accelerated pace at the beginning of the pay range and a slower pace towards the top of the pay range. And so this would be a different compensation philosophy than what the city has used in the past, and it does result in at any moment in time when you make that change, really some winners and some losers because of the way that we've traditionally done compensation. It also does not reward longevity and performance, which you typically see for individuals towards the top of their pay range. So in conclusion, although negotiations between the city and AFSMI were not successful, the city does remain committed to providing competitive wages and benefits to its workforce. And with that, we'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Thank you. Council, you can ask questions now, or you can wait until we have the call to the public. Push you. No, I'm talking to Carl, if you would. Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, Mayor. My first question is, Ms. Ayers, can you talk about the process for us for a bit?
Sure. The process that we initiated back in the fall, knowing that we had four bargaining units that would be coming to the table, is that we conducted the training and the wage surveys, and held sessions so that the bargaining units could talk about wages and compensation and the budget process. Then the management staff worked with city council in the executive sessions to establish the council priorities, and then we had our bargaining team work with AFSMI at the table, and again, after 20 sessions, was deemed unsuccessful.
Okay. Why did it take 18 sessions?
I think that the, I think a number, a variety of things happened between, I think, both sides, but I think that we all worked diligently to come to agreement. I think that they spent many, many hours at the table exchanging information and ideas, and it just, it didn't come together.
Okay. Can you go to one of your first pages on the PowerPoint?
Sure.
I'm gonna read this to you. City management staff represents the city council at the negotiating table and obtains instruction from the city council through executive sessions as authorized by the statute. That is true, but I do want to make something clear. Council does give direction, but staff also gives a recommendation that council considers. And I just want to make it clear that the 3.5 mentioned in this presentation is management's recommendation, correct?
Can I talk about the details, I'm sorry, of executive session?
You can certainly discuss the 3.5%. I don't think that gets into any discussion regarding the current executive session. I think you're here tonight on an open session item, and you can, to that extent, you can discuss it as part of this recommendation. You can't discuss any of the instruction given to you in executive session, but you can discuss it in confines of what you're here tonight to discuss.
Okay, I'll do my best to try to answer that question then. Thank you, Mayor and Council. The staff had parameters under which we recommended salary increases based on market data, based on ability to pay, but it was council's instruction to staff on the specific parameters that we went to the table with.
So can you tell me what staff's recommendation is then?
For the current proposal tonight?
Yes.
The current proposal tonight, in line with the instructions that we had been given during executive sessions, is a 3.5% two-year resolution with AFSMI.
Ms. Ayers, I'm trying to get clarification. Is that staff's recommendation?
It is staff's recommendation based on the instruction we received from council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leonie.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just got a couple of questions. How'd the negotiations go?
I think, from what I understand from previous negotiation sessions, this one was probably longer and more painful than other ones the city has experienced.
When did you start negotiations?
Negotiations opened with AFSMI on February 25th.
And when did it end? August?
AFSMI declared impasse on August 11th.
So it's seven months.
Yes.
Did you, how many days a week did you meet?
The actual physical negotiations took place on Thursdays primarily, so it was every Thursday, a full day. I know that there was prep work done. For example, I believe AFSMI also took another full day a week for preparations, I believe on Wednesdays, and then Thursdays was at the table.
So you met what, two days a month, a week?
Well, one day at the table, just so I'm clear. There was one physical day at the table where both sides were together.
So, okay. How many hours a day did you meet?
I believe that they, I believe it was nine to three approximately. I could, I'm not sure that, I wasn't at the table myself, so that's my recollection.
If you'd like, Councilmember Leonie, Chris Calcaterra, one of the negotiators, is here present and can give you a more accurate description of the time spent at the table in each session, if you'd like. Would that be helpful? Mr. Calcaterra, could you join?
We did meet on, actually, originally we started meeting on Mondays, as it started out in the sessions. It was preferred, after meeting with the union representatives, that Thursdays would work better. We met from 9:00 AM to about 3:30 in the afternoon, 4:00 PM on some days. Some days, we did end after lunch, which we took an hour lunch. Basically, in the mornings, we reviewed notes. We decided what topics we were gonna talk about for the day. Once we reached either some agreements or some impasse on some items, we moved on to the next item. We had several lists, if you will, of items that we attacked every day. But essentially, we worked as a collaborative group and figured out our schedules for the day.
So the other thing I want to ask is that, before we, when we went into all these problems with losing homes and nobody getting increases, how many years did AFSMI go without getting a raise? I think you have to know that.
Well, Mayor and Council, if I can assist in, then, as Ms. Ayers looks, so last year, there was a 5% increase that was included, so there was an increase in the last year. Then prior to that, as we were dealing through the economic downturn, there were three successive years of no increases, and then prior to that, there were a 5% increase in that fifth year out.
So only one, one year without AFSMI getting a raise?
Since when? Are you mentioning, last year, there was a 5% increase? Before that, there were three years during the economic downturn that we had no increases to that. In fact, there were no increases throughout the organization at that point in time, and management actually had begun no increases a year prior to all of those units.
So you got, how many years now, three years without a raise? That's what I'm trying to find out.
There was a period of time where there were three years without a raise.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Are we gonna have anybody from AFSMI speak?
Pardon me?
Are we gonna have anybody?
I have, I have a...
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Other questions? Okay. Randy Cordero?
Yeah, Mayor.
The timer is above the door here. It'll come on when you begin to speak.
I do not tolerate personal texts. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and esteemed Council. My name is Randy Cordero. I am the president of AFSMI Local 3282, City of Peoria. I'm here tonight in regards of our contract. Now, in going through the sessions of meeting into this negotiations, we fully engaged with every proposal that we had identified through our organization as important to everybody. When I mean everybody, I mean from the janitors, clear up, to the engineers. So our understanding was, we were to negotiate a fair and equitable wage for everyone. And a problem with your percentages is they do not work across the board. Our belief is that the percentages, and it does show that it hurts quite a bit on the lower end, in that there are people that are working at or below the poverty scale. Now, our problem with that is that if we continue to do that, we have employees that will never rise above that. And we do believe that we have been given through this negotiation process to bring forward those individuals, and to equitably give everybody the same amount. Now, knowing that, we've tried extensively throughout this negotiations to accomplish that, and our only way to achieve that would have been through the dollar amount. Percentages do good for high-wage earners, they just don't work at all for the lower rank of our employees. So in that, we ask for your consideration, and that you may truly give your assets, as has been said by you, Mr. Mayor, that your employees are your assets in the city of Peoria. And we do believe that this evening, we were given... And we do believe that this evening, we were given an opportunity that you may try to do this tonight. So I ask for you for consideration in the fact that you may truly award your, how would you say, your loyal, good, longstanding employees who have rated so well in the customer survey. And I hope tonight that you may truly give that to your employees.
Done?
That's it, sir.
Thank you very much. At this point in time, I would ask for a motion. Mr. Patana?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone on this dais believes that our employees are our greatest asset. They need to be treated fairly, and they need to be compensated fairly. Having said that, we have a finite amount of money, and we have many other projects that we have to pay for. Here's our multimillion-dollar capital improvement project, an economic development project. We have a fleet that has to be renewed and repaired, and we have citizens that want parks and playground equipment and a number of other things. And so, in many ways, we're doing a balancing act up here, trying to find money for all of those projects. We have, and we have to be able to sustain the raises that we give our employees. In 2012, all city employees got a 5% raise, and they're going to get a 3.5% raise this year and a 3.5% raise next year. It's a 12% increase, and I think that's pretty fair, given our economic times. Police sergeants agreed to a 3.5%. Our nonrepresented employees agreed to a 3.5% increase. I've asked the city manager several times whether or not there's been any complaints from our nonrepresented employees regarding the 3.5% increase, and every time, he's told me he's not had a single complaint. We've been at this now, the negotiators, for seven months, and we have made no headway. We haven't moved forward an inch. And I honestly believe if they went seven more months, we'd probably be at the same impasse. So I think it's time to get the ASME employees the raise that they deserve. And I'm going to accept staff's recommendation and make a motion to give a 3.5% increase for the next two years.
Mayor, I have an amendment to the motion.
I will deal with that if I have a motion. Do I have a second to Mr. Patana's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Rains?
Yes, you know, I do agree that 3.5% in today's economy is actually very generous. The norm I see now in the private sector is 2.5% if any. The median family income across the country is $3,500 less than before the Great Recession. Unemployment is still high. City of Peoria pays well with generous benefits, including a retirement package. Also, it's very competitive compared to other cities. The higher amount, a higher amount is just not sustainable in our current budget. Employee pay and benefits account for more than 80% of the city's general fund. It's not fair to citizens to increase pay at the expense of various core programs that citizens demand. However, ASME has strongly indicated that they want flat dollar amounts, equally our raises. So my proposal is that for those ASME members who have not topped out, that each one of them get a 75 cent hourly increase. And for those that have topped out, 41 cents. And we can check the arithmetic. I believe that this, this would equal the same amount as the 3.5% and the 80, 80, and the $181,000 for the topped out. If not, that can be adjusted from the 75 cents to the 41 cents. I want that to equal the total amount that we have available in our current budget.
May I ask?
No, you don't speak, sorry. This is a motion? You're amending Bill's motion to say that rather than a 3.5% per year over two years, we go to 75, 75 cents per employee, per year for two years, plus 41 cents per topped-out employee per year for two years? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
Do I have a second?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Rivera. Okay, we will now deal with this before we move on. Anyone have any comments or questions about the amended motion for 75 cents and 41 cents? Ms. Carla?
Yes, I understand the 75 cents to equal 3.5%, but the 41 cents, that becomes ongoing instead of one time?
No, that was for topped-out employees.
So is it one time, then?
Oh, it's 41 cents per hour, which equals the 850 over the course of a year.
One time?
Yeah.
Over, so one time meaning over the course of a year?
Right.
So they're going to get their one-time fund over the course of a year instead of a one lump sum?
That'd be a question for you guys. Yeah, okay.
Yes, thank you. The clarifying question would be, if the 41 cents is added to the base wage, does that become an ongoing, or after the two years, does that come back off of that wage?
In the original motion, that was just one year, wasn't it?
It was an $850 one-time payment. That would happen on their anniversary date.
Lump sum.
One time.
One-time lump sum.
So this is the same as that, except that it's not that lump sum. It's broken down per the number of employees, as I understood, and that would equal 41 cents.
That's correct. So if we added 41 cents to their base wage, it would become an ongoing cost, however, was just the clarifying point.
Would continue as an ongoing cost at the expiration of this contract?
Right, because we would then, if it's designed to be one time, we would then take that off of their wage at the end of the two-year period, was just to clarify.
Okay, so for clarification, and you wanted to stop after two years?
Yes.
Do you accept that?
Yes.
Okay. We're all square still, right? I'm talking to the good lawyer.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Carla?
Yes, I do have a comment about that. I think that at the end of two years, if you're used to 41 cents on your paycheck, in addition, every paycheck, every hour, every paycheck for two years, at the end of two years, you are actually going to have a pay decrease. I think that's a little bit different than getting a one-time lump sum of $850, which is an increase. One's a benefit, and one, at the end of its term, will be a negative. I think that's, I think that's a bad policy for us to put in place.
If we did the 75 cents and made the lump sum stay as a lump sum across those employees, would that be at three, is that at 3.5% too, or is that at?
It would be approximately a 3.5%. That's correct.
Okay, but don't, they're not going to get that all at one time, are they? So I don't understand how it's different.
The 75 cents that I believe you're referring to would be added on to the base wage that they would have, and then add on to future increases.
And that would continue, right?
And that would continue. On the one-time payments, the way that the city's handled the topped-out pay is it's a one-time payment that does not get added to your base, so future increases are not determined on that dollar amount. So that's the distinction.
Yes, but it's the same with the lump sum, too. I mean, all right, it's a one-time thing. It doesn't continue after the two years, is that right?
I think what she's saying, Mr. Ames, is that the 41 cent proposal gets added to their paycheck at the end of two years. If you don't cut it off, you've given them a 41 cent raise rather than a lump sum that raises their base pay. So your proposal raises their base pay, the lump sum does not raise their base pay. If I'm making $10,000 a year and I get $850, at the end of two years, I'm still making the $10,000 a year, at the end of that year. But if you put in 41 cents into their base pay, here's where I get in trouble, because I can't do the math. But I would be making more than $10,000 per year, at the end of the year.
Well, let me make a slight change to my motion, then.
Okay.
We can keep the lump sum for those who are...
Topped out?
Topped out, as we have it here in the motion, 850 each year for two years. However, those who are not topped out, it's a 75 cent hourly increase, continuing.
Do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? You can't make a motion, but you have a question about this one. Carla? No, you can't make a motion. We have to deal with this one first.
You can only have one amendment on the floor. We have an amendment on the floor. Council needs to dispose of the amendment.
Did you want to make an amendment?
Yes.
Okay, I'll come back to you for that, but we have to deal with his first. It's Robert's role, I can't help it.
Do we have amendment?
Any other questions or comments?
I'd like our attorney to tell us if we can have an amendment.
Can you have an amendment onto the amendment? The only way you can do that is, it has to be germane, meaning it has to amend a particular portion of the amendment. You can't replace any item in the amendment with another amendment. The proper way to do that is to deal with this amendment, and then, if this amendment passes, you can then amend a substantive motion. The only time you can amend an amendment is when the amendment to the amendment is germane, it directly relates to something in that First Amendment. And I don't think, I think here, you've gotten amendment on the floor, and the only issues to the, that seem to be the germane, are the question of what the hourly wage is and the lump sum, and you ought to try, deal with that amendment first and then entertain the next amendment.
So that we're all clear. The amendment we're going to deal with right now is 75 cents...
It's the Ames amendment.
And 850.
And it's the Ames amendment, and that's just what you're dealing with, not the main motion.
Yeah, because, well, he moved that, but then you have to get the second to us to agree to the change.
Yeah, but your amendment is presidential, so you're just discussing the amendment first. You're, the merits of the Ames amendment, you'll discuss the merits of the Ames amendment, vote on it.
Right.
If it passes, then the main motion's been amended. If it fails, then you're back to the main motion.
I got it. Don't worry about it. Okay. Okay, is everybody clear? I'm going to ask you now to vote on Mr. Ames' amendment, which says that the contract would be 75 cents per year for those not topped out, for two, per year for two years, and the lump sum payment of 850 per year for two years for those who are topped out, which is essentially the same as the 3.5%. It's just been translated into money as opposed to a percentage. Is that clear? Everybody clear on that?
That's correct.
Is it 75 cents?
And 850?
You have to wait.
Per year?
Per year, for each number.
Yeah, for two years, except for those who are topped out.
And when they're topped out, again, what?
850.
You have to take a vote before, is it?
Yes. The only thing we're changing, Carlo, is rather than 3.5%, we're saying 75 cents, because it's the same thing. If you take, if you take 3.5% across the group, it's 75 cents an hour.
Yeah, well, I got a proposal, I think, I'll put it in.
Well, you, we have to vote on this one first, then I'll come get your proposal.
Okay.
Okay, is everybody clear now? Please vote. A yes says we accept the 75 cents, and a no says we go back to the 3.5%. Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. The amendment fails. Ames and Rivera are the only ones voting yes. So we go back to the original 3.5%. Now, Mr. Leonie, you're up.
Thank you. Could I bring Randy back up and ask some questions, or is it too late?
No, make your motion.
Make my motion, okay. I make a motion that we give a dollar per member across the board for two years. Each member will get a dollar for two years, dollar a year. Also, I want $1,000 if you're topped out. And a third one is that, which you will have to back pay, will go all the way back. I believe it's July 29th. I could be wrong, just like everybody else is, yeah, that would be my motion.
Okay, if I understand the motion... I really, I really don't want to clear the room. Thank you. If I understand the motion, the motion is a dollar per, per person, per year for two years. $1,000 for those, per person, for those topped out, $1,000 per year for two years. And it goes back to when the contract expired? Okay, so which would be July, as of July 1? Okay, can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Conversation about this, questions and comments? Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to make some brief comments. My first three years on the council, which is going to be in December, I've always made citizens my priority from day one. Every vote that I've casted, I've always voted with the citizens. And this is an opportunity, I think, I believe, for the council to recognize, some of our employees, we have great employees from the bottom all the way to the top, but I sympathize with this group, and the reason I do is because they're the custodians, they're the people who pick up the trash, they're the people who don't get recognized. And the reason I know that is because I was a custodian. I was a groundskeeper. And this council, I don't want to attack anyone, it seems odd that we have, we find money to support theaters, organizations, that at times are not in the best interest of citizens. So this goes in line with what I believe, which is our citizens come first before anything. But there's also an opportunity to recognize those who are working behind the scenes to make this the great city that it is, the city of Peoria.
Thank you. Mr. Leonie? You said you wanted to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I want, I want to add to that is what I said on the motion. That ASME was out about two or three years without getting a raise, and they didn't make any fuss over it. They says, okay, if things are that bad, then we'll, we'll eat the bullet. And they did. They didn't make any fuss, they didn't make any bad remarks, a bunch of city council, all the city manager, anybody. They knew what was coming up, and they took it on the chin. So what I'm saying is that this is a little payback, what they have done for the city, now we should do for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Rains?
Yeah, what would the total dollar amount be compared to the current $1,086,000, I believe it is? Would we be able to calculate that?
Yes. Councilmember Ames, and if we did our estimate appropriately, we believe that if you were to look at a dollar an hour across the board for all ASME-covered positions, that would represent approximately a $1 million ongoing impact compared to a $572,000 impact for the three, for the 3.5% increase for those that qualify. So the difference is between $1 million and $572,000.
That's a one-year calculation.
That is the first year, and then that would, thank you for that, and that would be the first year that would compound over a period of time.
So what would be the total increase over the current one? Increase over that? Right now, the proposal, the dollar amount, which we say we can work through, the budget is $1,086,000. That's at 904 and that 181,000 for topped out and 904.
That's the two years.
That's the two years, yeah.
So then, what you're looking at, comparing that to $2 million ongoing, then roughly, that you would talk about for the same proposal?
About $900,000 more?
She has remembered.
So close to doubling it?
Yes, it would be slightly more than that.
Okay, other questions or comments? Okay, the motion on the floor is that we give them, that the increase be $1 per year, each, each year for, $1 for, across the board of the membership, for $1 a year for two years, $1 each year for two years, $1,000 to those who are topped out a year over two years. Questions or comments? Please vote. Clerk will record the vote. It is no, and Rivera and Leonie are the only ones that voted yes. We go back to the original motion. The original motion is 3.5% per year, 850 for those topped out a year over two, for each of two years. a year over two, for each of two years. Questions or comments? Please vote. Clerk will record your vote. It is yes on a four-three vote, with Ames, Rivera, and Leonie dissenting. Thank you very much. Next is thirteen R, public hearing, annexation, Pinnacle Peak Road and Seventy-Fifth Avenue alignments.
Thank you, Mayor Barrett. The next item will be presented by Chris Hockes, our planning committee director.
You may want to give it a minute, Chris.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the first of two proposed public hearings on separate proposed annexations. Under the Arizona revised statutes, we're in the, within the, what's called a thirty-day review period, and so at the end, the recommendation is that we have a public hearing, that no action can be taken at this time. This item before you pertains to a forty-foot wide strip of land comprising approximately one-point-one-seven acres. It's generally located at the southeast corner of Pinnacle Peak Road and the Seventy-Fifth Avenue alignment. Now, the property is owned by Melkor Development. Incidentally, staff is currently in the review of a zoning case and a general plan and proposal for the eighty-acre parcel located immediately to the west, so if you can kind of see an outline of an area in yellow, that's a development that we're under review right now called Riverwalk, also owned by Melkor. During the review of that case, it was discovered that the forty-foot strip was never annexed into the city, so the purpose of this request is to clean up that discrepancy. This slide illustrates the process as provided under the Arizona revised statutes. Again, we are within the thirty-day waiting period. Tonight is a hold initial public hearing with no action. At the end of the thirty-day period, we will, we will route a blank petition, and we have one year to collect signatures, and at that time, we will bring it back to the council for final action. So with that, I'll take any questions you have.
I'm going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing for annexation, Pinnacle Peak Road and Seventy-Fifth Avenue alignments. Would anyone in the audience care to speak to this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. No council action is required, so we'll move on to fourteen R, public hearing, annexation, Pinnacle Peak Road and One Hundred Seventh Avenue Alignments.
Thank you, Mayor. This second proposed annexation, this pertains to an assemblage of eleven parcels comprising approximately thirty-two-point-seven-six acres. The largest component in this annexation area is a seventeen-acre site owned by D.R. Horton. They currently have a rezon request into the city for residential development to be called Sierra Ridge Estates. Now, to be clear, because there is a lot of interest in the zoning case, that rezon is separate from this annexation and would continue on to the planning, zoning commission and city council at an undetermined time in the future, so it has not been scheduled for public hearing at this time, but it is not part of this annexation request. The balance of the annexation area consists of right-of-way, an SRP power line corridor, and six privately-owned parcels, three of which are developed currently with single-family homes. These parcels all lie within the Sun City West Fire District boundary, and this area is also considered a non-water service area, and we serve by the city's distribution system via waterline connection at Hundred Seventh and Pinnacle Peak. Like the last case, this slide just illustrates the process. Again, this is the initial public hearing with no action required, and again, at the end of the period, we would collect signatures, we have one year to do that. So with that, I'll take any questions.
See, oh, Ms. Ames?
Yes, could you tell us to collect signatures? What is, is there going to be like a public meeting, or...
Counselor Ames, the way the process works is, as I mentioned, there's eleven individual property owners out here, so, and all property owners are interested in annexing into the city of Peoria. So when the thirty-day period expires, we will forward those petitions out to those eleven property owners, and we have one year to collect at least fifty percent of the property owners in favor and more than fifty percent of the assessed value in the annexation area. Once we have those petitions meeting both tests, we will schedule a public hearing with the city council to take final action.
Okay, but there are only eleven in this one? How about the other one?
The proceeding case?
Yeah.
That was just one property owner.
Just one property owner, okay. So really, they're, this will come to us in terms of annexation?
Correct, final action. That's right.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. We're going to open the public hearing. This is a public hearing, annexation, Pinnacle Peak Road and One Hundred Seventh Avenue Alignments. Would anyone in the audience care to speak to this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. No council action is required. We move on to call the public on a non-agenda item. I have no items, so we go to reports from the city manager.
No report this evening, Mayor.
Reports from the city council. Mr. Leonie.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of, couple of things, I just want to say that I went to the, the red, white, and blue at Central Park. It was a jazz fiesta. It was, it was pretty, it was, it was pretty good, but I thought they needed more advertising. There wasn't that many people there unless they all came after I left, but when I was there, I didn't see as many people as I thought there would. But it's good that we have it, it's good that we do it every year, and hopefully next year, it'll be even better. On Thursday the twelfth, I went to a press conference with President Fox from Mexico, and it was a great, it was a great press conference, we had a lot of speakers, and I did want to say Tony did a great job on this, getting the people in, getting all these people to speak. And it was, it come out great, and I was real proud of Tony doing a lot of work, and also Anthony, who also helped him with this. The same night we had the dinner, and Vicente Fox was also there, and it was a great dinner. We had about, I don't know, maybe twenty concerned, between eight to a thousand people, and it's always great to see them there, you get to meet new people and who they are. And Vicente Fox did a great speech with McCain, Cindy McCain. And again, I want to say Tony did a marvelous job on this, getting this event going, and I don't think anybody here could do it. As long as I've been the council, we never had this kind of event before, and I did want to say, give Tony a lot of credit, and also give Anthony. The other thing I want to say, I went to Theater Works. The performance was big and musical. It was for the on-alve firefighters, for the hot shots. The fundraiser was good, and it was a packed house, and I'm glad that we have these fundraisers to help out the families and, you know, hot shots. Also, I just want to mention a couple of events coming up. We get one fun walk at the community center, the truck, the turkey trot, November the thirteenth. New Year's resolution, January twenty-ninth, step into spring must, two thousand fourteen, to be announced, and it costs fifteen dollars for each one, but to get all three of them, you save five dollars, and it'll be forty dollars. I want to mention that the next event is going to be at Country Meadows Park. It's going to be great. We're going to have a lot of inflated, inflated balloons, whatever they call them, the kids going and jumping around, face painting, sports equipment, the hooly hoop. They're going to have a lot of booths, we're going to have free hot dogs and drinks and popcorn. I hope I'm right, John, are you there? Okay. And then we're going to watch a movie as soon as it gets dark, and I think it's going to be Action Ralph, I never heard of it. Is that right? Okay.
Ralph.
Huh?
Wreck-It Ralph.
Wreck-It Ralph, okay. It's a cartoon, and it should be great for the kids. And this is going to be called Fiesta Peoria Event, and it's going to be on October fifth. That's all I have, Mayor. God bless each and every one of you, and God bless America. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Carla.
I just wanted to make a quick announcement, that there is going to be some small construction along West Wing Parkway in front of West Wing Elementary very soon. There will be the installation of some speed display signs that'll be happening. They will be completely installed by the end of October, early November, and that should slow traffic down in front of that school so that we can keep our kids safe. In the meantime, you might want to just slow down anyway. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards.
Nothing, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Ames.
Yes, I, like Carlo, attended events that Tony Rivera put on. Vicente Fox was here, and then earlier in the morning, Cindy McCain and Mrs. Fox had a discussion about human trafficking, and then around noon time, there was a pastor's luncheon at the, at Christ Church of the Valley, up by Happy Valley, Sixty-seventh. And then there was a dinner, and with, where Vicente Fox and the former Secretary of the Treasury talked, and they had a debate, and I thought it was an excellent debate. At all of those events, there were a lot of attendees, many hundreds at the pastors and hundreds more at the dinner, and a good showing at the breakfast as well. And I know Tony had planned this for weeks, and he did an excellent job of pulling this off. It was very smooth, and it was a very good recognition for the city of Peoria to have this kind of, these high-level speakers here in our city. I also went to the, I guess it's, yeah, it was a musical, big, at Theater Works, that was honoring the firefighters from Prescott, and I thought Theater Works did an excellent job. It was a packed house, and it was really a very, very good play, and it got a very good review, very good musical. The lead actor, who went from being a kid to an adult, is really two actors, but especially the adult one, he did an excellent job. He seemed like a kid and adult at the same time, which he was supposed to be, so I'm trying to do that myself. And let's, let's see, I attended a few other, other events as well, but I wanted to mention those two especially. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patena. Mr. Rivera?
I have a couple of things I want to mention. I attended the dinner for the Friends of Freedom. Friends of Freedom is a veteran support group, and they raise funds to supply a sergeant who lost both his legs above the knee with a motorized wheelchair. I also attended the Air Force ball, which would benefit the GIs out there at Luke Air Force Base. And finally, I have a announcement or something I hope everyone comes out and supports. There is an organization here called Homes for Our Troops, and they go out and they build homes for troops who are crippled in action. And they, this is the first home in the state of Arizona, and they selected Peoria. And the individual who's going to, when they had the grand opening and the ribbon cutting for, for starting the work on the home for this sergeant, he, he was still back in Washington, DC, Walter Reed. He had had a relapse. He lost both legs in an IED explosion, and he had a relapse, and he was learning how to walk on his, his artificial legs. He fell, hurt himself, and he was unable to attend the ribbon cutting. It's Sergeant Mike Leonard. He was on his fourth deployment in Afghanistan when he lost both legs. The home is almost done. They are looking, we are looking for volunteers to come out on Sunday, September twenty-second, from eight-thirty to ten-thirty. We need help to install the landscaping. By the way, there's no cost to Sergeant Leonard or his family for this home. It is entirely a gift to him from this organization, Homes for Our Troops, but it costs money to do this. So we're asking people to turn out and help put, put in the landscaping for the home. The home's almost done, they're getting ready to turn the key over. This is twenty-second September. Bring your own gloves, shovels, rakes, and garden tools. If you don't have gloves, they'll sell you a pair of gloves for ten bucks, and that'll go toward the help of defer the cost of Sergeant Leonard's home. The address is eight-eight-five-five, West Avenue, Del Sol Street, Peoria, eight-five-three-eight-one. I think we have a note about this up on the webpage. Please take a look, give it some thought, and please come out and help. Thank you very much. With that, we're adjourned.